Good evening and welcome to the October 8, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to city council. On our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, you'll see a green light will appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. Written remarks may also be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to talk to council tonight, please pick up and review a copy of this ordinance. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of this meeting, Reverend Ann Kirchmeyer with St. Andrew's Episcopal Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Ely will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation and pledge. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Tonight's invocation is composed of prayer requests raised by city leadership, including our mayor, at a gathering last month with pastoring the city and interfaith group of Newport News clergy. Let us pray. Holy One, as we gather together this evening, we pray for the youth of Newport News, youth experiencing turmoil, the mental health of our youth, healing from trauma for our youth, parents of children and youth, teachers and their families, teachers' mental health and high stress levels, kids and families of the juvenile justice system, the juvenile justice system staff dealing with secondhand trauma. We pray for wisdom for parents in general because parenting is challenging and especially during hard times. We pray for police officers serving at every level, especially those out on the street, and for homicide officers working to solve cases. We pray for all leaders, especially for replenishment during these difficult times, for our police chief, mayor, and superintendent as they care for the whole community. We pray for the staff of the city manager's office as they listen to people's needs and find ways to respond, for the circuit court clerk and staff, for the leaders and supporters of Thrive and other agencies. We pray for people living on the edge, for leaders and citizens of Newport News and throughout the whole country, for all unsung heroes. We pray that people will learn to be accountable and responsible, and that helpers will refrain from the kind of enabling that unintentionally ends up incapacitating
What a wonderful job Newport News has done.
people. And we pray also for ourselves, that we will live and lead in ways that provide positive examples for our youth, and that God will put us where we need to be to do
Pat, I cannot imagine the city of Newport News without you serving on city council, and the legacy you left will touch many generations and many people.
what God is calling us to do. Amen.
Please give me the pledge. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
Again, my name is Chad Green. I'm one of the three delegates who represent the city
with liberty and justice for all.
of Newport News, and I have a House Joint Resolution 164 celebrating the life of Gerald Everett Woodbury. Whereas Gerald Everett Woodbury, an honorable veteran, accomplished
At this time, I'd like to invite Virginia State Delegate Chad Green to the podium to make a presentation.
Move this thing up a little bit. engineer, beloved member of Newport News community, died on December 24, 2023. Born If I could have Councilwoman Woodbury and her family, please join me. in Portsmouth, Gerald Everett Woody Woodbury went on to graduate from Duke University, "Go Blue Devils," before honorably serving the country as a member of the United States Navy for three years. Whereas Woody Woodbury enjoyed a successful career as an engineer with the National Aeronautics and Space Administration, NASA, including with the team that put the astronauts on the moon. What an accomplishment. Whereas Woody foresaw the value of computer technology and spent many years of his life exploring its potential. Woody also embraced his creative side through his love for music, dancing, puzzles, games, script writing, and storytelling. Woody was preceded in death by his son Jerry, and will be fondly remembered and dearly missed by his loving wife, Pat, of 64 years, his daughter Michelle, and her family and numerous members, friends. Therefore, be resolved that the House of Delegates and the Senate concurring that the General Assembly hereby note with great sadness the loss of Gerald Everett Woodbury, a treasured member of the Newport News community, whose dedication and service inspired all who knew him. And I have a copy of this. It was prepared for you and the family.
Yeah, that has to come down for me. Thank you all for being here, for sharing this. And he loved puzzles. He loved solving problems. And he was an introvert, but he was supportive of everything I did, and always the wind beneath my wings.
Pat, I'd like to add one more thing. When I first ran for the York County Board of Supervisors, Woody was my treasurer, and I'll never forget that, all the lessons he taught me about reporting on comment and fundraising.
He kept account of my money, too.
He kept me straight. So, thank you. This is a joint resolution with the House of Delegates and the Senate, agreed to March 4th, commending the life of Reverend Dr. Marcellus Harris Jr. Whereas the Reverend Marcellus Lee Harris Jr., an honorable veteran, esteemed pastor, devoted civil rights activist, and advocate, and beloved member and leader of the Newport News community, passed away February 10, 2024. A native of Newport News, Marcellus Harris worked in the Newport News shipyard as a teenager and graduated from the historic Collis P. Huntington High School in 1960. Whereas Marcellus Harris enlisted in the United States Navy, we've got two Navy vets here tonight, in the Navy, served his country with honor and distinction during the war in Vietnam, where he heard his calling to preach and serve others as a faith leader. Whereas Marcellus Harris attended West Virginia State University, I did not know that, and earned degrees from Norfolk State, United Christian College, National Theological Seminary, and College in Richmond Seminary, and Canon Theological Seminary College to achieve his highest educational achievement, being a doctor of ministry. Whereas after returning to Newport News in 1969, Marcellus began his ministry at the Ivy Baptist Church, and two years later became the pastor at the First Baptist Church Morrison, where he would lead the congregation until his retirement in 2016. Whereas as pastor of the First Baptist Church Morrison, Marcellus Harris provided his congregation with an uplifting spiritual guidance and abundance opportunities for worship, fellowship, and community outreach. And I attended several of those services, and I can assure you they were all of that and more. Marcellus Harris' indefeatable efforts at the Morrison Church were vital to the church's growth and development over the years, contributing greatly to its posterity and longevity. Marcellus Harris was tirelessly advocate for racial justice, equality, civil rights, and a valuable voice in the community in countless board meetings, city council sessions, and other occasions. Marcellus Harris also extended his ministry beyond the church in various ways, including as a host of radio shows on Christian station WTJZ and a frequent contributor to the Journal and Guide. And he was also the founder of the United Campus Ministries of Christopher Newport and the Vice President of the Virginia State Baptist Convention, a member of the Hampton Roads Chapter of the SCLC Leadership, Southern Christian Leadership Conference, which he was very proud of and got me involved in. Marcellus Harris was dedicated to the well-being of young people in Newport News, coaching the youth, basketball, and over the years mentor to many. Marcellus Harris will finally be remembered and dearly missed by his loving wife Annette and his six children and their families and numerous other family members and grandchildren. Therefore, be it resolved that the House of Delegates and the Senate concurring that the General Assembly hereby note with great sadness the loss of the Reverend Marcellus Harris, a treasured member of the Newport News community, who was a source of joy and inspiration to all who knew him. And there's a copy that's been prepared for the family.
I just want to thank Chad for doing this for us. Been a hard year, obviously, with the loss of him because not many people are like Marcellus Lee Harris Jr. And if you ever had a chance to be in his proximity, you would know exactly who he is because he's going to let you know he's in the room. I strive to be like him with all that I do. He was more than a father to me. He was a father to so many when it comes to the community. He loved people. He loved people. And growing up seeing his love for people, I try to follow that mold and try to do and strive to be just like he was to the community that he served. And I still hear his voice quite often because it's a voice that was so impactful in my life, and I'm thankful for my brothers, my brother, my sisters here, my family, because we've all been getting through this together. But we know he's looking down on us smiling because of what he imparted in us to ensure that we're following his model and being loving to one another and being loving Newport News, which he loved so dearly. That's why he came and couldn't go anywhere once he returned back to the city. Even when his sisters went up to New York and New Jersey, he stayed right here in Newport News because he loved the people, and he loved pastoring, and he loved serving in any capacity he could to help those that were underserved. So, thank you once again, and we're going to continue to keep his legacy alive. We do have a scholarship in his name, and we're going to make sure the community will always know Marcellus Lee Harris Jr. Thank you.
And at this time, we'll let both families, if they want to exit, you guys can leave at this time. Of course.
Mayor Jones, that concludes my presentations. Hopefully, next time I'm in front of this body, I would like to have more joyous presentations. Wonderful-looking addition to the council chambers. Just want to say that we are up and running. We have a district office located at 5758 George Washington Memorial Highway up there in the Grafton Shopping Center, and I have my legislative aide Trevor Webb. He's in the back here. Any questions or comments, I can always be reached by email at dellcgreen.virginia.house.gov. So.
Thank you, sir, for not only your friendship, but also your love for the city. We appreciate you.
We did it all for you, Chad.
That's true. And may we always uplift the city of Newport News.
Good seeing you, Chad. We'll take just a moment or two just to get reorganized, and then we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all. With that being said, we will start with public hearings. Page 3, item E1 is request adoption ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds, necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located at 15220 Warwick Boulevard to Lawrence Jones. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Submove.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page 65, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution supporting Hilton Village Main Street's participation in the Virginia Main Street program, which focuses on revitalizing historic commercial districts. Hilton Village has completed the first two tiers of the program and is now preparing to apply for the final tier, Advancing Main Street, which offers additional training, resources, and grants through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. And as a former Main Street project manager for a community early in my career, I am pleased to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. At this time, I see that we have speakers. I will call each name in the order that appears in front of me. Seth Caddell.
Evening, councilors. My name's Seth Caddell. I'm with one of the owners of Coastal Fermentary, located at 20623rd Street, or just behind you. I am here this evening to speak in favor of the proclamation for Hilton Village. We've been open for almost four years now, and in those four years, we've done a lot of work in Hilton. We've partnered with them for many of their events. We've had the opportunity to get to see firsthand the kind of positive atmosphere that they build, the community that shows up and surrounds them for those kinds of events, as well as bringing in people from other cities, other municipalities. They've done an excellent job of running well-done events, safe events, that are always positive and always kind of leave people wanting more. And because of that, I believe that Hilton Village is one of the stars of Newport News. And that's coming from somebody that's in the middle of helping revitalize this area down here as well. But Hilton has been a second home to me. Even though I don't live there, they've welcomed me in and allowed our business to partner with them, to raise money, to continue to improve the local businesses there, to encourage them and push them forward. And so with that, that's really it. I just wanted to have an opportunity to voice my support.
Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution supporting Hilton Village Main Street's participation in the Virginia Main Street program, which focuses on revitalizing historic commercial districts. Hilton Village has completed the first two tiers of the program and is now preparing to apply for the final tier, Advancing Main Street, which offers additional training, resources, and grants through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. And as a former Main Street project manager for a community early in my career, I am pleased to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. At this time, I see that we have speakers. I will call each name in the order that appears in front of me. Seth Caddell.
Evening, councilors. My name's Seth Caddell. I'm with one of the owners of Coastal Fermentery, located at 20623rd Street or just behind you. I am here this evening to speak in favor of the proclamation for Hilton Village. We've been open for almost four years now, and in those four years, we've done a lot of work in Hilton. We've partnered with them for many of their events. We've had the opportunity to get to see firsthand the kind of positive atmosphere that they build, the community that shows up and surrounds them for those kinds of events, as well as bringing in people from other cities, other municipalities. They've done an excellent job of running well-done events, safe events, that are always positive and always kind of leave people wanting more. And because of that, I believe that Hilton Village is one of the stars of Newport News. And that's coming from somebody that's in the middle of helping revitalize this area down here as well. But Hilton has been a second home to me. Even though I don't live there, they've welcomed me in and allowed our business to partner with them, to raise money, to continue to improve the local businesses there, to encourage them and push them forward. And so with that, that's really it. I just wanted to have an opportunity to voice my support of this proclamation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we'll have Nicole Smith and then Robert Coleman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nicole Smith, and I'm proud to be a 10-year resident of Newport News and the owner of Sticks and Stones, a small shop nestled in the heart of Hilton Village. It's hard to believe that just two years ago, we made the decision to call this vibrant community our home after starting our journey at Hilton Village festivals. From the very first moment we set foot in the village, we felt a sense of belonging that is truly unmatched. Tonight, we're here to discuss Hilton Village Main Street and the incredible impact this organization has had on our merchants, residents, and the entire community. Through events like Spring Fest, Pride, Art Walk, Fall Fest, the Gingerbread Festival, the Farmer's Market, and our newly partnered First Friday Moon Markets, Hilton Village Main Street creates thoughtfully curated experiences that unite us all. These gatherings are not just events; they are vital lifelines for our businesses and our community spirit. As a project manager by trade, I rely on data to make decisions. Numbers speak volumes. My average daily sales during Hilton Village Main Street-sponsored events are nearly four times higher than my average sales on regular days. This isn't just a statistic; it's a testament to the power of community-driven initiatives. These events enable my business to flourish in ways that would be impossible without the support and resources provided by Hilton Village Main Street. But the impact goes beyond mere sales. We proudly support 110 local artists who sell their work in our shop, many of them young people. By fostering creativity and providing a platform for these young talents, we are not just building a business, we are nurturing the next generation of entrepreneurs and artists. Hilton Village Main Street empowers us to extend that support, creating a ripple effect of positivity that can transform lives. Even businesses that choose not to participate in Hilton Village Main Street's initiatives benefit from the increased foot traffic and community engagement events that these events generate, and I sincerely hope that they will join us as we continue to grow together. Thanks to Hilton Village Main Street, I've become a better business owner and a more engaged resident. This organization has fostered connections, encouraged collaboration, and cultivated a sense of belonging that we all cherish. In closing, let us remember that Hilton Village is not just a place; it's a community that thrives on collaboration, creativity, and compassion. Together with the continued support of Hilton Village Main Street, we can ensure that our village remains a vibrant hub for residents and businesses alike. Thank you, and let's all continue to uplift and celebrate what Hilton Village has to offer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Rob Coleman and then Myra Lag.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Rob.
Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Attorney, Manager, Clerks. Thank you for this opportunity. I will be brief, but first of all, I'd like to congratulate everyone on the All-American City status that we just recently got over this summer. What a fantastic honor. But that immediately made me think about, nothing is more All-American than Hilton Village. I mean, as a child, riding through the tree-lined streets of Hilton Village and going down to the elementary school and taking advantage of the pier and the little beach that was down there, it was a dream for a youngster and for my friends and for my siblings. Fast forward, Hilton is still relevant in our community. It's a fantastic, vibrant community full of great people, great businesses, and other great opportunities. So, I would ask each of you to please support this resolution and help Hilton and the rest of the city of Newport News move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Myra Lag and then Teresa Kansler.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. I hate to follow Nicole after that beautiful speech. I am the brand-new, less-than-a-week president of Hilton Village Main Street. I want to thank you all for the support you have given us and hopefully after tonight with the support of the resolution. I am a proud Hilton-adjacent, I live technically in Brandon Heights, so one street over, member of this community, though, and I am pleased to get to be a part and to represent such a wonderful group of businesses and small business owners. I've been inspired by my mother-in-law, who's probably taught some of the people in this room at Hilton School. She also was the chairperson of the Hilton 100 when that celebration happened, and she happens to have also been a 60-plus-year resident of the area. So, I want to thank you for all you do for us as citizens and for allowing us to get to be a part of this community, and I won't take any more of your time. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Ma'am, I want you to have your mother-in-law stand.
Thank you.
Please.
Jackie.
Come on, Jackie. Stand up.
Thank you, Dr. Woodbury.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Teresa Kansler and then Michelle Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Teresa Kansler, and I live in Hilton Village, and I'm privileged to be the president of Historic Hilton Village, Inc. The Hilton Village Main Street program started under the Historic Hilton Village umbrella in 2021 as an explorer, just to see if it might be something that could work in Hilton Village, and it has succeeded beyond everybody's expectations. So that in 2022, Historic Hilton Village provided the seed money to make it an even bigger program, and it continued its success partnering with the city, being a jewel for the city to show off to other locations. And earlier this year, they have grown so well that they are now branching off as their own nonprofit and their own Board of Directors. I am so proud to have launched them out into the world doing great things, and I hope that everybody here supports them also. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Michelle Smith and then Chris Davidson will be the last one.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Smith.
Good evening.
I am a resident of Hilton Village, or actually, I'm the same. I live one street over in Brandon Heights, but I still consider myself a Hilton Villager. Lived there for 23 years. My son, daughter, and I own Indulge Bakery and Bistro. We have been there now for nine years. We started 10 years ago, actually started at the Hilton Village Farmer's Market, and we did that for about a year, just making sure that we actually wanted to do what we were doing, and we loved it. We loved being in Hilton Village, and so that was our prerequisite. We had to find a storefront in Hilton Village. A year later, we found a storefront, like I say, nine years ago. When we found this storefront, the place that we are in had been vacant for six years. It had brown paper on the windows for six years. So that kind of tells you what Hilton Village was going through back then. Like I say, we've been there for nine years. We've seen the ups and downs of being in this historic area. We absolutely loved it. It was a challenge. We struggled for years, but we wanted to make it because we loved Hilton Village. So, fast forward, nine years later, we now have, we started out with my son and I and two employees. We now have 14 employees. We have grown, and I, you know, put it all on, first of all, the city has really started supporting Hilton Village, and we're so grateful for that. This wonderful organization of Main Street, starting all these farmer's markets, and we had wonderful people in the neighborhood just doing all the support for all the festivals that we have, all the farmer's markets. Saturdays now, our streets, the sidewalks are lined with people walking up and down. It's so wonderful to see how vibrant, how blossomed our neighborhood has become, and we're so grateful, and I just am in so support of what this organization is doing. I'm so grateful for them to have formed this beautiful cohesive supportive community of Hilton Village, and I just wanted to come to show my support for what Main Street Group is doing and to thank the city, too, for doing things.
Councilman Vick.
And my daughter and I, my daughter Tiana, Vic and I, you know we love your place. We always come.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I think everyone on City Council knows, it's the best whiskey gravy.
Sorry, can I say one more thing? Because of the tremendous support and what we've been doing, we just purchased Kismet, and we're opening that hopefully soon. Bizu. Bizu is the name of it.
We can't wait.
Last one will be Chris Davidson.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council, Mr. City Manager, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Chris Davidson. I'm the immediate past president of Hilton Village Main Street, Inc. It is quite an honor to be here tonight for this momentous occasion as we receive this resolution, which we thank you for. Not everybody had a chance to speak, but there is incredible support here tonight. So if I could just ask that if you are here to support Hilton Village Main Street tonight, please stand.
Yes.
So, it is, like I said, been an honor to be the founding president of this new organization that started out from Historic Hilton Village. My mom raised us, my brother and I, as a single mom, moved us into Hilton Village in 1986 on Main Street, ironically. I had the pleasure of walking to Hilton School. I was president of the student council, actually. Love that. And Booker T. Washington Work High School, all the way through. So even though I don't live in Newport News anymore, I love Newport News, and Hilton Village is literally a part of my soul. So, one day as I'm riding by and I see the bustling market about a year and a half ago, I said, "What is going on over there? Let me just get out and see if I know some people." Oh my goodness, it was amazing. The activity was awesome. The energy was high. I talked to my friend JB, who we actually had another house right after I got married and lived right next door to them, and I said, "What is going on here? She told me about Main Street." I got really excited. Well, pull me right in. And I got the chance to serve, first in a consulting capacity pro bono, and then as president of this board. So, it's been quite a thrill. I love Hilton Village and I love Main Street. I've gotten to know the wonderful things about what a great program Main Street is in terms of their resources, in terms of the best practices, in terms of how they transform communities. And guys, communities are never at status quo. This is why I accepted this role, is because I believe our communities are either on the rise or they're on the fall. And Main Street is something that I see as a way to project Hilton into the future on a rising path. And so I'm here tonight to strongly support this resolution and personally to thank you as councilors for this, also for your financial support. I also want to give thanks to the Office of Economic Development, Florence Kingston, Derek Perry, Elizabeth McCoury over here, and also to the Newport News EDA and coming together to make all of this possible. So anyway, thank you so much, and I'm here in strong support of the resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Motion to approve the resolution. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out here today. Hilton is a place that is just not a pass-through, it's a destination. I love going to Hilton Creamery. My cousin knows, we better not go there past Hilton. We got to stop at the Hilton Creamery. So just the environment there, the farmer's market, all the events. Last week, they had the Art Walk, and I just sat out there and painted a postcard for about 45 minutes, but just the relaxation that Hilton brings. So, I'm definitely in support of what you're doing. I see Hilton going and growing to the next level, and I'm definitely surprised what Main Street is doing. And just thank you, JB, for all, and everybody, all the citizens there for what y'all are doing to make Hilton just the best place to live, play, and work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vick.
And yeah, I'd just like to say, I'm a Newport News native, but I'm a really great hustle and bustle woman. And so with that, moving around, being able to be a part of different shops, like as they are in Hilton, gives us a sense of community and pride, and that's why I'm so happy that you all came, so happy that we're able to support this resolution, and to be able to encourage all of you as businesspeople to know that it takes a team to be able to thrive, and that's what you all have done. And I am so happy that you all came to let us know exactly what you've been through with your businesses, what made you start. I really want to thank Elizabeth McCoury because she has always been, every ribbon cutting I've gone to, she's been there for new businesses. So I really want to thank you and thank you all for this opportunity.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
I just would like to say, as a person who has sung in the choir for 55 years in Hilton Village, one of the churches, of the four churches that are there, is my church, and it has been truly a joy. I feel like it's my second home, and I love it. So I am so pleased with this proclamation, and I'm supporting it.
Thank you. At this time, is there any further discussion? All right, I think we're good. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if Hilton wants to stay, but if not, you can exit at this time. You can feel free to stay, but if you want, you can leave now. We'll just take a moment just before we start for item G2.
But just remember, we talk about you if you leave.
And as we're resetting for item G2, I just want to take a moment and say just thank you to the students from CNU who always come out. Please stand up, my CNU, CNU family. Thank you for being involved in your city. I know today was a bipartisan way to get students to vote, so just thank you for coming out. We really appreciate you. At this time, we'll go to item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to adopt an ordinance allowing the payment of surplus funds from the tax sale of 420 Merrill Court to Marion Thomas Harper, as permitted by Virginia law. City of Newport News has a process for auctioning properties with unpaid real estate taxes with any surplus proceeds held by the Circuit Court for two years, during which time former owners or heirs can claim the funds. In 2021, 420 Merrill Court was sold, leaving a surplus of $74,546.39. Recently, the power of attorney for the former owner requested the surplus, and the city council is asked to approve the request citing special circumstances due to the sale occurring during COVID-19, during the COVID-19 pandemic. I recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the ordinance. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 76, item H, Mr. Manager.
The first appropriation is a resolution supporting a $975,000 grant application for upgrading athletic field lighting facilitated by the Community Project Funding Program and approved by council in April 2023. The grant will be used to upgrade lighting at Jenkins Elementary School ball fields and install new lights at the soccer fields in Riverview Farm Park. Total project cost is estimated at $1,080,000, with the federal grant covering 90% and the remaining 10% funded through the Capital Improvement Plan. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $522,000 of grant funds the city received from the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund for the New Market Creek watershed study. This watershed, which spans 4,431 acres and includes four smaller watersheds, has undergone significant alterations over the years. The study will create an updated computer model of the entire watershed to identify problem areas and recommend solutions for flooding and drainage issues. The total cost of the study is $580,000, with a grant of $522,000 awarded and matching city funds of $58,000 provided through previously allocated FY 2023 general obligation bonds for stormwater projects. The third appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,150,000 for transportation safety improvement programs that are annual initiatives under the Capital Improvements Plan. For fiscal year 2025, two major projects are proposed. One, LED street lighting upgrades and additions, and secondly, traffic signal installation and upgrades. The final appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $4,272,300 from the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund for the Stony Run Drainage Projects, addressing significant flooding issues affecting approximately 1,230 acres in the Colony Pines and Windsor Great Park neighborhoods. A study identified 11 projects involving storm sewers, ditches, and basins to alleviate flooding with a total cost of $46,200,000. ditches, and basins to alleviate flooding with a total cost of $46,200,000. The design phase of these projects is estimated at $4,747,000, leaving a remaining $474,700 that will be matched through previously allocated FY 2024 general obligation bonds for stormwater projects. I recommend approval of all the appropriations.
Thank you. Are there any speakers? I see we have one. Chris Fryman for Hotel 03.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
I believe that was just for, was that one for one traffic section for the upgrade for the 1.150?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. I just want to put it on the council's radar. Maybe we can send an envoy. There's a place called Carmel, Indiana, where they've done advanced roundabouts, things along those lines. I think they're a little more advanced than what City Center has. But I guess they have a lot of cost allocations. It's improved safety. They're trying to get a Dutch model going in so they can have bikes, and they figured out a way to use it on more high-congested roads, so.
Okay. We'll take a look at it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item H1 through H4.
To move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilwoman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ealing.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item I, citizen comments on matters remained to council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Jakil Pandarvis. And then Pastor John James after.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My topic is about the homeless and just understanding, overview of what really is going on. But I want to make sure I make God know that whatever you want. Okay. When you see a homeless person, what do you think? Drug addict, smelly person, or a person that just, they just don't want to get a job? That's not always the case. Any, anywhere from 75% of the American people are only two paychecks of being, from being homeless themselves. So, when it comes to looking at the Newport News downtown and different things like that, there are a lot of abandoned buildings. I believe that some of these things can be helped and fixed with the homeless by providing jobs, opportunities, or just a place to live. All these things that people ride by and see and different things like that, when you go to think about, you know, property value, tourism, and property upkeep, the homeless kind of affect that. So, as you drive in your car and you think things are pretty swell for you and your family and all of that, I think we need to reassess the word humanity as constructed to what God wanted it to be. Yes, we have the mantra of, or the saying of, "Each one teach one," but we also should have each one help one. And that needs to be from the top to the bottom, because leadership affects everything. So, in closing, as you go home, you drive home, and you think about, I just drove past a homeless person who, yes, a lot of them might be, some of them on crack, or some of them might be on drugs, but that's not always the case. As I said, most Americans are two paychecks away from being homeless themselves. So, with that now in your frontal lobe of what you think about as you drive home, I just want you to reassess when you see a homeless person and think about, should you help them or not? I am a part of that community, but even with me being a part of that community, whatever little bit I have, I still try and share. I still try and help regardless. And I think since I am at the bottom doing that, that the people at the top should be doing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pastor John James, and then Megan Adams.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How y'all doing today?
Good, sir.
Doing all right. Mayor and the rest of the council and the people up there. Off of what the young man just spoke, his name is Shim. I'm Apostle John James from Holy Redemption Church, new member of New Vision Church Ministry, New Vision Ministries, right there on 34th Street and Washington Street, Washington Avenue. We see the homeless people out there all the time. And I hold the heavy responsibility to help that, to help them, because we are the church. And in a 10-block radius, you can have these churches that are almost a half a block long, and they only use probably 10% of their space. But we have homeless people that are out here that are in heavy need. I'm not saying to shift or change, and this is not even to you guys, this is, if there is funding to help the churches, take care of the responsibility, is what I'm saying. Because what happens is these, like, like Shim said, these people are no different than you and I. I got off the pole pit. I went and sat with them, ate with them. I went out there and slept on the ground with them. I can't help you if I don't know what you're going through, if I can't feel that. And people will drive by and say, "That's an eyesore." If you see this guy changing his clothes in the middle of a sidewalk and, you know, and you look like that's the homeless man, he's crazy. That's his home. And you drive your car and park right on his, right in his living room. He has no place to be. And sad to say, a lot of these people are vets, because I speak with them. A lot of these people have skills that can fix abandoned building and make it. A lot of people have, a lot of these people have, nobody takes the time to ask them whether their skill sets, what can you do? But I did. And so, I was going to read some scriptures out of here, but the spirit is saying it's okay. What I will do, and what I will say is that if there is an opportunity for the churches that have that space to be helped, would you guys stand and help those churches? I know you would call it an eyesore, but I would say just help those people get back on their feet, those that want to. And if you want to talk with me, I have a plan, and that young man right there definitely has a plan. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just point out that Link works with the churches during the wintertime. If y'all, if you have particular churches that want to get in contact with Link, that might be an opportunity to be partner.
Yeah, I understand. They ship them from, I understand, from.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do Megan Adams, and then Latoya Fleming.
It's so pretty in here. My name's Megan Adams. I live at 219 Hilton Terrace, and I guess it was a good time to come talk about Hilton Village with all this love. I just wanted to say, I came two weeks ago to talk.
No, no, you're good. That's an air.
To talk about the 10,200 block of Warwick Boulevard and the crashes that happened there. And you introduced me to the Director of Engineering, and he was so responsive and response to my email immediately. So, all of the homeowners, the renters there, there's about, group of about 15 people who are just elated that there's such a response. So, thank you for your time, and we appreciate you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Latoya Fleming, and then Chris Fryman. I think Chris just spoke, actually, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Latoya Fleming. It's a pleasure to be before you all. I'm here today on the behalf of Rakia Mohammed, a trailblazer for our community who, for over 16 years, has organized a federally trademarked Stop the Violence Basketball Tournament. This tournament has more, is more than just a game. It is a lifeline for our youth and a beacon of hope in our community. To not support her efforts now would be a great disservice, not only to her, but to the young people whose lives have possibly been impacted by this event. We are here asking for more than just help to run this tournament. We're asking you to stand with us and amplify this powerful initiative. Our requests today are very minute, but the impact will be lasting. All we're asking for, first, the facility. The cost of securing a venue is a significant burden. We, we're asking the city to either provide a facility or sponsor one for the two-to-three-day event. As alternative, it is full, excuse me, as an alternative, if full financial support for a new venue is not possible, we could use the school facilities, which have worked well in the past. Security. Ensuring the safety of the participants are critical. We ask the city to help cover the cost of security and/or assist in providing resources to maintain a secure environment for all the attendees. Marketing and promotion. This tournament has been a cornerstone in fighting violence, but to truly make an impact, we need a wider participation. We're asking for help from the city to promote the tournament through its official channels, i.e. social media, newsletters, and even local news. Sponsorship assistance. We also request that the city help step in, securing local business partners, sponsors to further support the tournament. These funds could cover equipment, uniforms, and refreshment, making the experience even more meaningful for the participants. Grants or long-term funding. While we focus on this year's event, we need to think long-term. We're asking the city, please consider allocating funds annually to keep this tournament going without the need for last-minute funding requests, ensuring that this event can grow and thrive in the years to come. Volunteers. This wonderful city could also help us by coordinating volunteers, whether from local communities, centers, schools, or even city staff to assist with the logistics, setup, and cleanup. Transportation. Her tournament is all up and down the peninsula and the eastern shore. People travel here to this great city, to this event. So what we're asking for the transportation, for those who may be having trouble accessing the venue, we're asking to support in providing transportation to the tournament, and the young, that way no person is left behind due to the lack of the access. This is my last point. These requests are, while extremely minute, will have a massive and long-lasting impact on our community. To deny Rakia Mohammed the support would not only undermine her work, but also deny our youth from an opportunity to thrive in a safe and positive environment. We are urging you to prioritize these needs and make the Stop the Violence Tournament a continued success. Thank you all for your time and effort.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chris Fryman.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, again. I always get a little nervous up here, so I apologize. This one's more towards the new city attorney and the manager as well. For about a year and a half now, I've spoken about the school bus cameras that we have in Newport News. I've heard a lot of things, and it's not just this community. It's Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, as well as Williamsburg, James County, Richmond. And it gets into something where this year, there was actually a House bill proposed to prevent the companies from taking, for instance, Newport News, 60% of every ticket, so they could have their tech fees, but they couldn't take that 60%. It would help retain that back into the community. Day one, they gutted the bill, and they rewrote it so a community doesn't, or you don't have to have justification of a quota when implementing the system into your county. And then the company's representatives came out, said, "We are in support of this bill." And it makes me really wonder who's writing our laws and who's doing things, and if we have protections at the local level to push back on some of this. And I know there's schools, the city, the police, and you get kind of this spread of who has jurisdiction on what, how, and who can be involved where. Now, just to put out this, and this is from the beginning of the program to June 2024, these programs have absorbed $8.3 million. Now, the company has their tech fee, around $2.35 million has been absorbed through that, but it didn't go through a lowest bid procurement. It went through, it piggybacked off of what's called a co-op agreement. Now, that 60% that they were talking about, making sure the communities have, is about $3.6 million. So, if they had done this in the beginning, that might have been something more we see. But then the question is, what do we do with that revenue? And when researching this in other states, I know, I came across something called the three Es. Enforcement, which is what we're doing, enforcement, education, and engineering. I've been trying for a year now to get signs put up in these high-ticket areas. So I'm just going ahead, I'm short on time, and run, run through them. If you're driving in Newport News, you have high-ticket areas. Now, this original survey showed from Ackerson Road to Fort Eustis Boulevard, that two mile stretch where the divide ends, that's always been a hot-ticket area, about 20% of the revenue. Going southbound on Jefferson, just before the Popeye's Chicken, all the way to Casey with the Big Flag, you're going to see high-ticket areas there. So these are more of the main drags. J. Clyde Boulevard near Thimble Shoals, all the way to Casey with the Big Flag, high-ticket areas. Harpersville, Harpersville Road, Jefferson, to Main Street of Jefferson, you're going to see high-ticket areas there. I can't tell if they're north or southbound. And then, when you get to the intersection of Mercury to Jefferson, where the McDonald's is, there's some clusters there. Davis Trailer Park also has high-ticket areas, and Briarfield Road all the way to 664 Overpass. So, we need signage, like I said. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
New business. Our next item.
One speaker.
Okay, yeah. Alan. One more speaker.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize. I came here in support of the Main Street program. I think that's very exciting. And I just wanted to speak to you and let you know what we're trying to do downtown, continuing that Main Street from Hilton as it heads downtown to the area that was significant to the Harvard Bloomberg study that you initiated, to link those two and create a true Main Street again, a street that will, will be able to embrace business, embrace community, embrace pedestrians, and have a living, working, fun, playing, praying place. And that's the hope that I have for what we're trying to do downtown in the develop, development of the Good News Project. I mentioned that when y'all were at Christopher Newport. And when you see the people that have come to speak to you tonight, and how important that is, and how much it means to y'all, we need to extend it downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is new business. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to take this moment to express my gratitude to all the hard-working individuals who contributed to the renovation of the city council chambers. Their dedication and effort have transformed this space. I'm so pleased that a number of individuals have commented on it as they've come back into the chamber since renovation, making it a more welcoming and hopefully a more functional environment. There just is one outstanding list that we will address, and that is the need to adjust the seats. So, again, it's a wonderful opportunity to have this public space renovated in this manner. It is a fitting of this community and this council, and I just want to thank everyone for all their hard work on the project. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. City Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk.
I have nothing, sir.
Councilman Ealing.
I just want to say again, I had the opportunity to attend the Hilton Art Walk that was very well-received and put on. Also had the opportunity to, to attend the Fall Festival. I would like to give Parks and Recreation, the whole department, kudos for all the hard work that went into that. I was talking to Shelley. She said there's over 17,000 people attended that event. And it was also good to see the Maine and Newport, not Maine and Newport News, all-American city branding throughout the event, so that was really good. Also, with the Stop the Violence event, I had the opportunity to attend that event. It's well-received and good.
It's well-received and good, you know, y'all always doing great things for the community. So I definitely support the efforts y'all do with the Stop the Violence event. I think it's always good when you see outside community groups come together who have a vested interest in the community. So keep up the good work, and I support that event that y'all do. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Yes, and I also want to thank everyone for coming out on tonight. I do want to send my congratulations to Dr. Terry Best as we had an opportunity to attend the NAACP Award on Sunday evening. And she was honored to recognize as the NAACP recipient of the year. Just a quick note about Dr. Best. When I became a school counselor back in two thousand and five, she was one of my mentors and always been very close in regards to sharing information with me and answering questions that I had for whatever reason. So I just want to just congratulate her for receiving that award. It was well-deserved. And she continues to do great work as she serves as our vice chair on the Newport News School Board. And that's all I really had on tonight. I also want to thank State Representative Chad Green once again for recognizing my father and all my family who, they've all gone now. But for them to be here, because that really meant a great deal for us because what kind of, we were judging the impact on his life throughout the course of this year as he passed away in February. And something happened over the course of the past couple of weeks that let us know just how powerful he was, how impactful he was. He received a, the resolution tonight from a Republican. And last week, he received a resolution from a Democrat, from Mamie Locke. And when the two parties agree on something nowadays, it's kind of far and few between. But they agreed, both parties, with the representatives, that my father was worthy of a resolution. And that meant a great deal to us. So I want to thank everybody for that. And that's all I had on tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Long.
I wanted to say thank you for everyone that came out and spoke tonight. Speaking to the homelessness, I know the city just recently piloted a program called Chance to Shine. I'd like to, I know the city manager is planning on bringing that to council at some point to talk about the success. And the Chance to Shine program is meant to provide working opportunities for those unhoused, homeless, and are not employed. So the Chance to Shine program, looking forward to seeing more about it. But I think this is important for residents to understand that City Newport News is working with the homeless population to create opportunities so they can step back into society and be an active participant. Also want to thank the United Way and First Spark, working with the City Newport News. Last week, Tuesday, October first, there was a childcare breakfast for the business community. It was over eighty-five participants. And the whole idea of the breakfast was to engage employers in the conversation of how do we create more affordable and quality childcare for our young people? One of the things that's been noted is to have a childcare to be affordable, seven percent of a person's income. A child for a month is roughly like nine hundred dollars. Well, that equates to a household having to make at least one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars for childcare to be affordable based on the standards that the federal government set. So this breakfast was an opportunity for employers to engage because I think the long-term solution is not just for the government to subsidize, but also employers to be a part of that conversation. So I know First Spark and United Way is continuing this conversation and just hoping employers, if they were not able to participate, is to stay engaged and find out how you can participate in making sure childcare is affordable and quality for our families. Next, I have City Newport News, we're hosting an event, housing event. It's called Breakthroughs in Housing Symposium Igniting Communities. It's going to be October the twenty-sixth at CNU from twelve to four. And this is an opportunity for homeowners as well as tenants to be empowered with tools so they can be successful in their housing journey. The workshops are going to be geared towards homeowners and potential homebuyers, renters and potential renters. It's a variety of different workshops. If you're interested in attending, if you go on the Newport News planning website, there is a link for registering. It's, again, it's October twenty-sixth from twelve to four. If you are still trying to find out how to register, you can reach out to the clerk's office. Sorry to put that on you, Mabel. But reach out to clerk's office, and she can get that information to you. But this is an opportunity for our residents to learn the different tools that are available for them to be successful in their homeownership or tenant. And last but not least, this is the most important thing. I just want to wish my wife a happy birthday. Couldn't be here.
Finally, finally.
Just want to wish her a happy birthday. And we're looking like we're getting out early tonight, so maybe I can see you before you go to bed. But just hopefully you've enjoyed your, enjoyed your night or enjoyed your day, and I'll see you later tonight. That's all I have.
Anything else, Cleon?
You might be able to see her only if you stop the comments.
I don't think I need to say anything after all that. But it has been a banner night, and I am so grateful for Chad Green and the resolution. I'm so grateful for you all coming out and being part of our government. It is so important that you be engaged, and I thank you for that. And I thank whoever designed this beautiful place now that I'm leaving. I just, I just want to say, look at my legacy. Isn't that wonderful?
Love it, Pat.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Vick.
Yes, I just want to say ditto everybody about the room. It's just so much brighter in here, the new carpet. And it just shows what can happen when you generate revenue and can get new things and actually pay for them like we have as a city. Thank you to all the mayor and council. And so also, I have to say this. It's so good being a part of a leadership team that has vision and being able to create an even better vision for this city and for the things that we want to do. So I want to thank you, mayor and vice mayor, for the retreat this week. It was really, it's just always so good. Everybody comes to the table as a leader with their ideas, from their background, their experiences. But to be able to actually try to mesh those into what we can add to help make our city better and to help our citizens reach higher heights. So I thank you for that. And as the gentleman, you commented about the homelessness. We have done some things in the city. Of course, there are also always things that we can do better. But I would like to have a conversation with you, maybe not tonight, but at some point, to just show you some of the things that we've done and to be able to pull together some of the views on that. So thank you, but thank you for what you brought to the table. And I would be remiss if I would not say how proud and how excited I was to be, to work with our president of Christopher Newport University, President Kelly, to bring General Charles Q. Brown, the Joint Chief of Staff of our military. He is in charge of all the military. And he just happens to be my classmate from the graduating class of Ferguson High School nineteen-eighty. To see him in that position and to actually host him here in Newport News. He was so delighted to be here. He had a chance to talk to the young people, students at CNU, to talk to them about what a huge job he has and to be able to encourage them at the same time that they can also get to that level. So it was so good to see him and be able to welcome him to Newport News. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice mayor.
Yep. Only thing I have tonight, first, just want to thank everyone for coming out. I mean, I'll echo the same thing. It's a beautiful space in here, right? It's so bright. I feel like I need shades. But, you know, maybe going forward, we could just make everybody take their shoes off when they come in, too. It looks so nice, right? You know, when you get a new house, you just want to make sure they don't take their shoes off. Or they take their shoes off. But nevertheless, it's a beautiful space. Congratulations, staff, on amazing work. And thank you just for an efficient day. I am extremely one who loves efficiency. So today as a whole has been pretty efficient, so I'm thankful for it. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I'll just have two quick things. Just one, thank you again to our CNU Wausen Center students and the entire university for participating in Captain's Vote Day. It's encouraging to see the next generation vote. And it doesn't matter who you vote for, as long as your voice is heard. So thank you for that. Thank you for staff. I know there was a lot of activity this week, whether it was the retreat or the Halloween or the firefighters check going, you know, door-to-door during Fire Prevention Week. A lot of good things have been happening in the city. And then finally, I'll just say to B two and to Pat, we love you and we're so glad that you were able to recognize and give love to your loved ones. And with that, we say adjourned. Thank you.